Good morning. This is going to be a very interesting session. Okay, thank you. The hour has come. We've established a quorum. We're going to get started now and ask all guests and visitors to please retire behind the rail. Thank you. To give our invocation this morning, the Chair recognizes Father Thomas Higgins of Holy Innocence Church. He is here today as the guest of Councilwoman Kionna Sanchez. I would ask all guests and visitors to please rise.
Thank you, President Clark. As you move into your new quarters here, friends, we have a saying in church circles, if you want to make God laugh telling your plans. And I know you didn't plan on meeting in this particular room today, so everybody's getting used to the new setting, yes. I do want to take this opportunity before my prayer just to thank our Councilwoman, Councilwoman Maria Kionna Sanchez, for giving me this opportunity to be with you and to offer this prayer. And special thanks to all of our councilmen and women for all the good work that you do for our city. Much, much appreciated. And special congratulations for landing the Democratic Convention next summer. Way to go. And to you and to the mayor for that. It will be a great moment for our city. However, it will be preceded by another great moment when my boss arrives in town. Pope Francis is coming to town, as you know, in September, and we are all very excited for that as well. And I thought, as part of my prayer, I just would like to read a passage from our Holy Father, Pope Francis. I just think it fits well for you and for me. So we put ourselves, as we certainly are, in the Lord's presence. Pope Francis. What does serving mean? It means giving an attentive welcome to a person who arrives. It means bending over those in need and stretching out a hand to them without calculation, without fear, but with tenderness and understanding, just as Jesus knelt to wash the apostles' feet. Serving means working beside the neediest of people, establishing with them first and foremost human relationships of closeness and bonds of solidarity. Solidarity, this word that frightens the developed world. People try to avoid saying it. Solidarity, to them, is almost a bad word. But it is our word. Serving means recognizing and accepting requests for justice and hope and seeking roads together, real paths, that lead to liberation. So, brothers and sisters, I pray that you and I, two very important arms of our city, the civic arm, the religious arm, can continue to work, serving the needs of those in need, the poor, the homeless, the disabled, the disenfranchised, the addicted. We can do our best individually, but perhaps more importantly, we can do our best together in solidarity with one another. So I pray for you this day. May God be with you during your council meeting. May he continue to encourage you, strengthen you, challenge you, to do all that you can in his name. And may God be praised. His holy name is with us. God be with you. God be with us. And God bless each and every one of you. Amen. Thank you.
Thank you, Father. Thank you so much. Very much appreciated. So... Thank you. Thank you. The next order of business is the approval of the Journal of the Meeting of Thursday, February 12, 2015, and the Chair recognizes Councilman Greenlee.
Thank you, Your Honor. Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the Journal of the Meeting of Thursday, February 12, 2015, be approved.
This is going to be an interesting day. It's been moved and properly seconded at the Journal of the Meeting of Thursday, February 12, 2015. Stand and approve, all those in favor say aye. Those opposed, ayes have it, and the Journal is approved. The next order of business is a request for a leave of absence, and the Chair recognizes Councilman Jones.
Thank you, Mr. President. On behalf of the Democrats, there are no requests for leave of absence today.
Chair, thanks to gentlemen. Chair recognizes Councilman O'Neil.
Thank you, Mr. President. On behalf of the Republicans, there are no requests for leave of absence.
Chair, thanks to gentlemen. At this time, I would like to dispense with the regular order of business, and I would like to welcome and thank everyone who has taken time out of their busy day to come down and witness your government in action. We hope you come again, but we would prefer that we be in a different room the next time around. But we want to thank the good friends from the court and public property for accommodating our ability to have this hearing, and you did a great job for converting this from a courtroom into a council chamber, so I want to thank you so much for your support. Again, I would like to thank everyone for their participation in today's session. Thank you very much. We have no presentations today, so the next order of business is communications, and the Chair requests that the Sergeant of Arms delivers the messages from the mayor to the Chief Clerk. Mr. Decker, please read those messages.
To the President and members of the Council of the City of Philadelphia, pursuant to Sections 4604 and 2307 of the Home Rule Charter, I am today transmitting to the Council the recommendation of the City Planning Commission on the following bills, Bill Numbers 15003 and 150053. And I am pleased to advise you that on February 18, 2015, I signed all the bills which were passed by council at its session on February 5, 2015, except Bill Number 15001, which I am returning without my signature. And that on February 12, 2015, I signed Bill Number 141026, which was passed by council at its session on February 12, 2015. And I am transmitting herewith for the consideration of your honorable body and ordinance authorizing transfers and appropriations for fiscal year 2015 from the General Fund, certain or all city offices, departments, boards, and commissions; the Grants Revenue Fund, the Director of Finance Provision for other grants; to the General Fund, certain or all city offices, departments, boards, and commissions, all under certain terms and conditions.
Thank you, Mr. Decker. You have any additional communications?
I have none, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. At this time, we will have introductions of bills and resolutions, and the Chair recognizes Councilwoman Blackwell.
Thank you, Mr. President. Today I introduce two resolutions, one privileged and one non-privileged.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
A privileged resolution calling on the City Council of Philadelphia to recognize Foreman Mills for their $10,000 giveaway as they exemplify and demonstrate the powerful positive impact businesses can make in our community.
That will be on today's final passes calendar.
And a non-privileged resolution approving the redevelopment contract of the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority for the redevelopment and urban overhaul portion of the Belmont Number Two Urban Old Area identified by house number and street address, as 4050 through 4066, Havreford Avenue.
That will be on next week's final passes calendar, and the Chair recognizes Councilman Greenlee.
Thank you, Mr. President. On your behalf, I offer two resolutions.
Thank you, Councilman.
A non-privileged resolution authorizing the Commissioner of Public Property to execute and deliver to the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority without consideration deeds conveying conditional fees simple titled, sitting on lots of pieces of ground with the buildings and improvements there on, situated in the 43rd Ward of the City of Philadelphia.
That will be on next week's final passes calendar.
And a non-privileged resolution approving the redevelopment contract of the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority for the redevelopment and urban overhaul portion of the model cities urban overhaul area identified by house number and street address is 1925 West Wilt Street.
That will also be on next week's final passes calendar, and the Chair recognizes Councilman Heenan.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no bills or resolutions today.
Thank you, Councilman. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Tascow.
Mr. President, I have no bills or resolutions today.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Chair recognizes Councilman Johnson.
Mr. President, I have one non-privileged resolution sponsored by Councilwoman Rhonda Reynolds Brown and Councilwoman Cindy Bass.
Thank you, Councilman.
A non-privileged resolution urging Congress and the United States Department of Transportation to release specifications for tank car design and for Philadelphia rail companies to rapidly upgrade and replace crude oil tank cars.
And that will be on next week's final passes calendar, and the Chair recognizes Councilwoman Kionna Sanchez.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have one non-privileged resolution and one bill.
Thank you, Councilman.
And ordinance legalizing an existing masonry and concrete patio encroaching on the public right-of-way at 214 West Sargent Street.
That bill will be referred to committee.
And a non-privileged resolution authorizing the Commissioner of Public Property to execute and deliver to the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority without consideration deeds conveying conditional fees simple titled, sitting on lots of pieces of ground with the buildings and improvements there on, situated in the 18th, 19th, and 37th wards of the City of Philadelphia.
That will be on next week's final passes calendar, and the Chair recognizes Councilman Nielsen.
I have no bills or resolutions. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman. Chair recognizes Councilman O'Brien.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have one privileged resolution co-sponsored by Councilman Jones, Bass, and Reynolds Brown.
Thank you, Councilman.
A privileged resolution authorizing councils committees on the disabled and special needs and public safety to hold joint public hearings investigating the barriers faced by people with serious mental health issues who are transitioning from incarceration to the Philadelphia community.
That resolution will be on today's final passes calendar, and the Chair recognizes Councilman Good.
Thank you, Mr. President. I offer one bill on behalf of the administration.
Thank you, Councilman.
And ordinance authorizing transfers and appropriations for fiscal year 2015 from the General Fund, certain or all city offices, departments, boards, and commissions; the Grants Revenue Fund, the Director of Finance Provision for other grants; to the General Fund, certain or all city offices, departments, boards, and commissions.
That bill will be referred to committee, and the Chair recognizes Councilwoman Reynolds Brown.
Good morning. Good morning, Mr. President. I offer one non-privileged, co-sponsored by members Bass, Sanchez, Jones, Johnson, and Nielsen, and another resolution co-sponsored by members Councilwoman Bass, Councilwoman Maria Kionna Sanchez, and Councilmembers Curtis Jones and Councilmember Kenyatta Johnson.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
A privileged resolution authorizing City Council's Committee on the Environment to hold public hearings regarding the state of Philadelphia's environment.
That will be on this week's final passes calendar, and the Chair...
And a non-privileged resolution urging the School District of Philadelphia and the School Reform Commission to return to the bargaining table with "Unite Here Local 634."
That will be on next week's final passes calendar. Chair now recognizes Councilman Jones.
Good morning, Mr. President. I have no bills or resolutions today.
Thank you, Councilman. Chair recognizes Councilman O'Neil.
Thank you, Mr. President. I offer one bill.
Thank you, Councilman.
And ordinance amending Section 9 to 13 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Farmers Markets by amending greener pastures located at 1290 Southampton Road as a permissible location.
That bill will be referred to the appropriate committee, and the Chair recognizes Councilman Squiller. He's not here. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Bass.
Thank you, Mr. President. I offer one privileged resolution co-sponsored by Councilman Nielsen, Jones, and Rhonda Reynolds Brown.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
A privileged resolution declaring March 2015 as National Social Work Month and recognizing the dedication and commitment of social workers in Philadelphia's Department of Human Services and community umbrella organizations.
That will be on this week's final passes calendar, and the Chair recognizes Councilman O.
Thank you, Council President. I offer two privileged resolutions co-sponsored by Councilwoman Bass, and with your permission, may I introduce a privileged resolution and two bills on behalf of Councilman Mark Squill.
Thank you, Councilman.
And ordinance to amend the Philadelphia zoning maps by changing the zoning designations of certain areas of land located within an area bounded by Kensington Avenue, Letterly Street, Jasper Street, and Haggard Street.
That bill will be referred to committee.
And a non-privileged resolution authorizing the Commissioner of Public Property to execute and deliver to the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority without consideration deeds conveying conditional fees simple titled, sitting on lots of pieces of ground with the buildings and improvements there on, situated in the 31st Ward of the City of Philadelphia.
That will be on next week's final passes calendar.
And a privileged resolution honoring and recognizing Joey Landfest, Greg Montanaro, Congressman Robert Brady, the Greater Philadelphia Traditions Fund, and City Council's Office of Veterans Affairs for their tireless dedication to our veterans and their unwavering resolve to organize and establish the first citywide Philadelphia Veterans Day Parade in 2015.
That will be on today's final passes calendar.
And a privileged resolution recognizing and honoring the Korean-American veterans of the Vietnam War for their service to the United States.
And that will also be on this week's final passes calendar.
And a privileged resolution recognizing April 30th as Vietnamese Heritage and Freedom Flag Day as a symbol of contributions of the Vietnamese-American community in the City of Philadelphia.
And that will be on this week's final passes calendar. And that concludes our introduction of bills and resolutions. At this time, we'll have reports on committees, and the Chair recognizes Councilman Greenlee for a report from the Committee of Law and Government.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Committee on Law and Government reports three bills and three resolutions with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. Mr. Decker, please read that report.
To the President and members of the Council of the City of Philadelphia, the Committee on Law and Government, which is referred to Bill Number 140230, entitled an ordinance providing for the submission of the qualified electors of the City of Philadelphia of the proposal set forth in a resolution approved by council proposing an amendment to the Philadelphia Home Rule Charter relating to the creation, appointment, powers, and duties of a commission for women. And Bill Number 140747, entitled an ordinance providing for the submission of the qualified electors of the City of Philadelphia of the proposal set forth in a resolution approved by council proposing an amendment to the Philadelphia Home Rule Charter to provide for the preparation of language access plans by all city agencies. And Bill Number 15005, entitled an ordinance providing for the submission of the qualified electors of the City of Philadelphia of an amendment to the Philadelphia Home Rule Charter establishing and defining the responsibilities of an independent commission on universal pre-kindergarten. And Resolution Number 140244, entitled a resolution proposing an amendment to the Philadelphia Home Rule Charter to provide for the creation, appointment, powers, and duties of a commission for women. And Resolution Number 140764, entitled a resolution proposing an amendment to the Philadelphia Home Rule Charter to provide for the adoption of language access plans by all city agencies. And Resolution Number 150017, entitled a resolution proposing an amendment to the Philadelphia Home Rule Charter to provide for the creation, appointment, powers, and duties of a commission on universal pre-kindergarten and providing for the submission of the amendment to the electors of Philadelphia. Respectfully reports it as considered the same and returns the attached resolution to council with a... Bills and resolution to council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. The Chair can recognize this Councilman Greenlee.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the rules of council be suspended. So as for my first reading this day, a bill number is 140230, 140747, and 150005.
Thank you. Before I call for a vote on the motion, I'd ask anyone who has a device that rings, makes any sorts of loud sound that is audible, please turn them off on silent. Thank you very much. At this time, it has been moved and properly seconded that the rules of council be suspended, so as to permit first reading this day of Bills Number 140230, 140747, and 150005. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it. These bills will be placed on our first reading calendar for today. Resolutions Number 140244, 140764, and 150017 will be placed on our final passes calendar in our next session of council. Chair now recognizes Councilwoman Kionna Sanchez for a report from the Committee on License and Inspection.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Committee on Licenses and Inspections reports two bills with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. Mr. Decker, please read that report.
The Committee on Licenses and Inspections, which is referred to Bill Number 140944, entitled an ordinance amending Subcode A of Title IV of the Philadelphia Code entitled the Philadelphia Administrative Code by amending Section A 907 entitled zoning fees by revising certain zoning fees for family and group daycares. And Bill Number 15008, entitled an ordinance amending Subcode A of Title IV of the Philadelphia Code entitled the Philadelphia Administrative Code, as it has been amended by Bill Number 140856, by amending Chapter 9 entitled fees by revising the fees for licenses issued under Chapter 93900 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Property Licenses and Owner Accountability. Respectfully reports it as considered the same and returns the attached bills to council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. The Chair can recognize this Councilwoman Kionna Sanchez.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the rules of council be suspended as to permit first reading this day of Bills Numbers 140944 and 15008.
Thank you. It has been moved and properly seconded that the rules of council be suspended, so as to permit first reading this day is a Bill Number 140944 and 15008. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, ayes have it. These bills will be placed on our first reading calendar for today. That concludes our report from committee, and the next order of business is our calendar. I note that the bills just reported from committee with suspension of the rules have been deemed to have had a first reading, and these bills will be placed on our second reading and final passes calendar at our next session of council. As there are no additional bills on our first reading calendar, Chair recognizes Councilman Jones for a calling up of the resolutions and bills on the second reading and final passes calendar.
Thank you, Mr. President. The following resolution and bills are being called up from second reading and final passes calendars today. Number 150099, 150100, 150104, 150110, 141027, 140902, 140903, 140971, 150003, 150054, 140517, 140635, 140649, and 140886. All of the resolutions and bills are being held.
Thank you, sir. Before considering these bills and resolutions on a final passes calendar today, we will have our public comment session. The public comment session will go as follows. If you have not signed up to testify on a bill or resolution today that is on the final passes calendar, I'd ask that you do so. And the table is on... Where's the sign up? Where's the sign up for the... Oh, in the rear. Okay. Thank you. Yeah, there's a table in the rear. You can sign up to testify today. Your name will be called. When your name is called, I ask you to go to the podium in the middle of the council session, council chambers slash courtroom. You will be given three minutes to speak. There's a device on that podium. When the light turns green, it's your time to speak. When the light turns yellow, you have 30 seconds to conclude your remarks. And when the light turns red, we'd ask that you please adhere to the guidelines and conclude your remarks. Thank you so much for your participation and your compliance with those particular guidelines. Mr. Decker, would you please call the name of the first individual who is testifying today?
Dr. Stephen Gambesha. Commenting on Bill Numbers 140517, 140635, 140649, and 140886.
Good morning, sir.
Good morning. President Clark and members of council, I'm Dr. Stephen Gambesha. I'm representing the American Heart Association. I'm also a faculty of Drexel University as a professor of Health Services Administration. The American Heart Association is joined with many health advocacy partners, including the American Cancer Society Action Network, American Lung Association, urging council to defeat and reject the legislation before you today for this body to propose for these four exemptions related to the Philadelphia Clean Indoor Air and Worker Protection Law. The members of city council, we understand that you understand that secondhand smoke's dangerous to human health. Like to point out and recognize and thank Councilwoman Tascow. At the last hearing, we understood that council is going to... You'll have before you a bill that would really end these exemptions that we have. And in December, what the committee did is they actually did not pass these resolutions, and we thought that was very helpful. Unfortunately, the committee reconsidered these four exemptions, and they're going to be passed. We think that this legislation, it creates an impossible choice for Philadelphia workers to decide whether they can earn a living wage or smoke in a smoke-filled environment that may kill them. Philadelphia workers shouldn't be forced to expose themselves to the toxic and harmful environment in order to have a job and collect a paycheck. Nothing about the science of deadly secondhand smoke has really changed. Less than a quarter of Philadelphia's smoke, and the majority of Philadelphians, they don't want to smoke, and they don't want to be exposed to secondhand smoke. What is of note, and I think that's new, is that, and I think very compelling for the body to consider, is that the Greater Philadelphia Life Science Congress of the Philadelphia Visitors and Convention Bureau that testified at the subcommittees on these bills noted that they're also joining us. And what's happening is these large conventions, especially the health conventions when they come to the city, if you don't have a comprehensive Clean Indoor Air Act, especially for workers, the conventions won't come here. The American Heart Association is in that camp as well, and we think that that's going to be problematic for the economy of the city. So what we are urging respectfully is that the council, on behalf of the health of Philadelphians and the economy, not pass these four exemptions. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony.
Irma Lopez Salter. Commenting on 150110.
Good morning.
Hello. Good morning. I'm here to let you know that PRIAT closed down the gallery or closed down the small businesses. They allowed some of the businesses to stay. They allowed... They misled us by saying that they was closing the whole gallery for two years, for two years, and they did not... And they did not keep their word. We had Mayor Squiller, I mean, Mark Squiller represent our district, which the gallery is this district. He did a very good job. The reason why we didn't get the time we should have got because they misled him. They told him mistruth. They gave him the same impression that they gave us. Yesterday was supposed to be our last day, and other vendors are still there. So they chose who to put out, who to mislead, that there wasn't going to be no more gallery. It wasn't going to be... All this construction was supposed to be happening. I've been there since October 1st, 1992, 23 years, and now I have to go to unpack, to have no income, to don't know where to go from here because the gallery's still open because they allowed... All these people here, they're vendors. All these people here, they got a story to tell, but of course, you don't have the time to hear the whole stories I'm trying to tell it for them. So I appreciate if you could go back to PRIAT, although they said yesterday was the last day, and to say it was the last day because you thought you was closing the whole gallery. You're not closing the whole gallery. So you misled the councilmen, your district person, our district person. And so when they come before you for money, for tax incentives, are they going to mislead you to tell you how they're going to do so much to bring in businesses? Philadelphia businesses could stay? Or are they going to bring all these people from out of town, you know, and mislead you like they're going to do something for us? So now that they misled us, would you please go back today, call PRIAT, and tell them, why did you tell her she was closing down? You're not closing down.
Right. Yeah, I think the Councilman wanted... Councilman Squiller.
Thank you, Mr. President. And thank you, Irma. I want to say that Irma has been leading the fight for the kiosk and vendors there in the gallery, and that we were able to get two extensions from the December 31st. They extended it to January 31st, and then has Irma so well explained to me how important Valentine's Day was to the merchants and what it meant to them, and they extended it again till the 18th, which is yesterday. So they did do that rent-free, and they did tell me that the Gallery One will be closing and Gallery Two. There are still some contracts they need to buy out, and some people who have leases that they need to fulfill, but they are in the process of actually trying to close down everything. What we wanted them to do is offer them some other locations. Some of the locations aren't good for the vendors. They have offered them some locations in the other malls, and some of the vendors have actually found some place on Chestnut Street, South Street, Frankfurt Avenue, and other spots for the vendors to work out during this time where the gallery will be going under some major changes. I still want to work with them. I've spoken to PRI, understanding that we're going to need an EOP in place for the repair of the gallery... We're going to need an EOP in place for the repair of the gallery. We want to work closely with the vendors and the merchants involved to make sure that we have not only minority and owned businesses being back in the gallery once it reopens, but also local businesses, people who are from Philadelphia, and how important that is. And that will be a part of the legislation for protection of the vendors and the retail stores that will come back. So, I mean, I know this is a tough time right now for them. We did work low with the gallery. The gallery said they will not extend it time any longer for anybody without a contract, and that we need now to work with where to go, how can we help these vendors go to all the locations, and how can we help them to maybe get a good relationship with PRIET to come back once the gallery's open. So I thank you for all your work and standing up for your constituents and for the vendors there, and hopefully we continue to work together to make this a good story at the end. So, thank you.
I appreciate everything you've done, but it would be a really good story if at least we could stay till everybody leaves, because it's not fair that while they're negotiating, they got this big sign, a new store's going to open next month, 2015, not 2016, so how are new stores going to come and open up? And then there's all the stores in gallery two are open. There's two kiosks that are allowed to stay. They're major names. Radio Shack, I know they filed for bankruptcy, but somebody bought them out, and they're going to keep their name. Aunt Annie's, they're made, you know, they're a big company, but they have kiosks in there. But why could they stay and we can't stay?
Okay.
Just for clarification for the record, it's not really a new store. It's a relocation from gallery one to gallery two for the bakery, and that's till their contract has expired.
They'd be having the whole place for them, you know, just to they buy their contract out, you know, so let us stay there till everybody's bought out and everybody's out. You know, we want to feed our family. We, you know, like I always say to them, I fed your family, you allow me to feed mine. Could I still feed my family till you really close down? Would you please help me? Or call them now and say, you know, let them stay till you buy Tiffany out, and then let Tiffany go, because that's the one that they'd be having, so-called buying them out.
Okay. And thank you, Ms. Salter.
Could you help too, President? Could you work with this too, please?
Yeah, and I've had the pleasure of knowing you for a lot of years, and we've done some good things together back in the good old days and the advocacy days.
Yes, that's right. And I thank you.
And I understand. I really appreciate your commitment. We do have this process internally.
I know.
Because I don't believe anybody, any of the elected in here knows more about that location and this issue than Councilman Squilla. So if there is any assistance that's needed from Councilman Squilla, it's obviously going to be given from members of this chamber or myself or any staff issue. So we'll work through the councilmen to see, particularly on any relocation plans, to see if there's some assistance for the city, because I know the city does step in when there needs to be relocation of the traditional stores. So there should be some process that established to support vendors, because you are in fact businesses, although you're a small business and more mobile business, but you should be given some assistance from the city of Philadelphia. So I will work with the councilman for my behalf and any assistance he needs and move him forward on, trying to make sure that you're kept hold as much as possible if and until there's actually a development of the gallery to make sure, okay?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Ed Boyle.
Morning.
Commenting on 140649.
I'm the owner of Boost Mobile and the gallery. We were told construction was supposed to begin in March, and many merchants are staying well through April.
Can I do this? Because this is not really on the calendar.
Okay.
Is it... Is there legislation on the calendar yet? Final passes. Mr. Decker.
Ms. Lopez was commenting on bill number 150110, Mr. President.
And that is... All right. And I understand your plight. We do have guidelines. The bill... Your ability to testify has to be on a bill or resolutions on a final passes calendar. You're in the smoking waiver? Okay, you're in the smoking waiver. Okay, I just wanted to make sure that we're on this list. Okay, my fault. All right.
Counselor, I also... I was happy to talk to that too after the meeting today.
Okay. Okay. All right. This isn't a smoking waiver. Okay, good. Yeah, we don't have the... No, sir. Are you speaking on the smoking waiver bill?
No.
So you were the other. Okay. All right. Okay. Well, we'll follow through on that. Thank you.
Ed Boyle.
All right. So, Mr. Boyle, you were using that as a segue. I got you. All right. Okay.
There are no other speakers on the public comment list, Mr. President.
Thank you very much, Mr. Decker. That concludes our public comment, and we will now move on to our calendar for today. Mr. Decker, can you please read the title of 150099?
A resolution approving the redevelopment contract of the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority for the redevelopment and urban over portion of the model city's urban area identified by house number and street address is 1227 North Lees Gauk Street.
Chair recognizes Councilman Greenlee.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move the adoption of the resolution.
We move in probably second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Ayes have it, and 150099 is adopted. Mr. Decker, 150100.
A resolution authorizing the commissioner of public property to execute and deliver the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority without consideration to its convey conditional fees and entitled services sitting on lots of pieces of ground with the buildings and improvements around situated in the 18th, 28th, and 37th wards of the city of Philadelphia.
Chair again recognizes Councilman Greenlee.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move the adoption of the resolution.
We move in probably second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Ayes have it, and resolution 150100 is adopted. Mr. Decker, 150104.
A resolution also naming the 22 on the block of Winton Street between the intersections of Snyder Avenue and Jackson Street as Wild Bill Way in recognition to Bill Guarnieri's pure dedication to fellow man loved by the city of Philadelphia and his heroism and willingness to sacrifice all for his country.
Chair recognizes Councilman Johnson.
Mr. President, I move for the adoption of the resolution.
Second.
It's been moved in probably second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Ayes have it. 150104 is adopted. Mr. Decker, 150110.
A resolution approving the redevelopment contract of the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority for the redevelopment and urban over portion of the Whitman Urban Area identified by house number and street address is 509 Wolf Street.
Chair recognizes Councilman Squilla.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for the adoption of resolution.
Second.
It's been moved in probably second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Ayes have it. 150110 is adopted. Mr. Decker, 1401027.
An ordinance authorizing the issuance from time to time of one or more series of general obligation bonds to provide funds to refund certain outstanding general obligation bonds of the city of Philadelphia.
This bill has been heard on two separate days. The question is, shall the bill pass finally? Mr. Decker, call the roll.
Councilwoman Bass, Councilwoman Blackwell, Councilman Good, Councilman Greenlee, Councilman Heenan, Councilman Johnson, Councilman Jones, Councilman Nielsen, Councilman O'Brien, Councilman O'Neil, Councilman O., Councilwoman Conrona Sanchez, Councilwoman Reynolds Brown, Councilman Squilla, Councilwoman Tasco, Council President Clark.
Aye, the ayes are 16 and ayes are 0. Majority of members present voting in affirmative that the bill passes. Mr. Decker, 140902.
And ordinance authorizing the revision of lines of grades on the portion of city plan numbers 224 and 242 by striking from the city plan at vacating Cayuga Street from Whittaker Avenue to its terminus eastwardly therefrom.
This bill has been passed on two separate days. The question is, shall the bill pass finally? Mr. Decker, call the roll.
Councilwoman Bass, Councilwoman Blackwell, Councilman Good, Councilman Greenlee, Councilman Heenan, Councilman Johnson, Councilman Jones, Councilman Nielsen, Councilman O'Brien, Councilman O'Neil, Councilman O., Councilwoman Conrona Sanchez, Councilwoman Reynolds Brown, Councilman Squilla, Councilwoman Tasco, Council President Clark.
Aye, the ayes are 16 and ayes are 0. Majority of members present voting in affirmative that the bill passes. Mr. Decker, 140903.
And ordinance amending Title 10, Handcuffed Regulation of Individual Conduct and Activity of the Philadelphia Code by adding rules regarding use of dumpsters.
This bill has been heard on two separate days. The question is, shall the bill pass finally? Mr. Decker, call the roll.
Councilwoman Bass, Councilwoman Blackwell, Councilman Good, Councilman Greenlee, Councilman Heenan, Councilman Johnson, Councilman Jones, Councilman Nielsen, Councilman O'Brien, Councilman O'Neil, Councilman O., Councilwoman Conrona Sanchez, Councilwoman Reynolds Brown, Councilman Squilla, Councilwoman Tasco, Council President Clark.
Aye, the ayes are 16 and ayes are 0. Majority of members present voting in affirmative that the bill passes. Mr. Decker, 140971.
And ordinance authorizing the Children's Hospital of Philadelphia to construct or to maintain various right-of-way encroachments within the public right-of-way at 2716 South Street.
This bill has been read on two separate days. The question is, shall the bill pass finally? Mr. Decker, call the roll.
Councilwoman Bass, Councilwoman Blackwell, Councilman Good, Councilman Greenlee, Councilman Heenan, Councilman Johnson, Councilman Jones, Councilman Nielsen, Councilman O'Brien, Councilman O'Neil, Councilman O., Councilwoman Conrona Sanchez, Councilwoman Reynolds Brown, Councilman Squilla, Councilwoman Tasco, Council President Clark.
Aye, the ayes are 16 and ayes are 0. Majority of members present voting in affirmative that the bill passes. Mr. Decker, 15003.
And ordinance authorizing the trustees of the University of Pennsylvania to construct or to maintain a temporary pedestrian bridge right-of-way encroachment within the public right-of-way at 3400 Civic Center Boulevard and 1 Convention Avenue.
This bill has been heard on two separate days. The question is, shall the bill pass finally? Mr. Decker, call the roll.
Councilwoman Bass, Councilwoman Blackwell, Councilman Good, Councilman Greenlee, Councilman Heenan, Councilman Johnson, Councilman Jones, Councilman Nielsen, Councilman O'Brien, Councilman O'Neil, Councilman O., Councilwoman Conrona Sanchez, Councilwoman Reynolds Brown, Councilman Squilla, Councilwoman Tasco, Council President Clark.
Aye, the ayes are 16 and ayes are 0. Majority of members present voting in affirmative that the bill passes. Mr. Decker, 150053.
And ordinance legalizing existing retaining wall encroaching on the public right-of-way at 1806 Emerson Street.
This bill has been heard on two separate days. The question is, shall the bill pass finally? Mr. Decker, call the roll.
Councilwoman Bass, Councilwoman Blackwell, Councilman Good, Councilman Greenlee, Councilman Heenan, Councilman Johnson, Councilman Jones, Councilman Nielsen, Councilman O'Brien, Councilman O'Neil, Councilman O., Councilwoman Conrona Sanchez, Councilwoman Reynolds Brown, Councilman Squilla, Councilwoman Tasco, Council President Clark.
Aye, the ayes are 16 and ayes are 0. Majority of members present voting in affirmative that the bill passes. Mr. Decker, 150054.
And ordinance authorizing Thomas Jefferson University to construct or to maintain lighted bollard right-of-way encroachments within the public right-of-way at 1008 Locust Street.
This bill has been heard on two separate days. The question is, shall the bill pass finally? Mr. Decker, call the roll.
Councilwoman Bass, Councilwoman Blackwell, Councilman Good, Councilman Greenlee, Councilman Heenan, Councilman Johnson, Councilman Jones, Councilman Nielsen, Councilman O'Brien, Councilman O'Neil, Councilman O., Councilwoman Conrona Sanchez, Councilwoman Reynolds Brown, Councilman Squilla, Councilwoman Tasco, Council President Clark.
Aye, the ayes are 16 and ayes are 0. Majority of members present voting in affirmative that the bill passes. Mr. Decker, 140517.
And ordinance amending Section 10602 of the Philadelphia Code known as the Clean Indoor Air Worker Protection Law by providing for a limited period of time during which certain private clubs may apply for and obtain a waiver of the provisions of the section prohibiting smoking in certain places.
This bill has been heard on two separate days. The question is, shall the bill pass finally? Mr. Decker, call the roll.
President.
Yes, Councilman.
I just want to...
Prove it to the vote.
Yes.
Okay.
I would like to have my remarks spread on the record for bills number 140517, 140635, 140649, and 140886. In my previous career in Harrisburg, I was involved in the drafting and the passage of the legislation providing for the use of the tobacco settlement dollars. We had numerous and exhaustive hearings. It was evident that the tobacco companies were focused on the negative health consequences that non-smokers were exposed to from secondhand smoke, and I would just like to read into the record the findings of a recent report that reiterated and strengthened many of its previous findings regarding the harms associated with exposure to secondhand smoke, including the harmful effects on children such as sudden infant death syndrome, induction and exacerbation of asthma, increased respiratory tract infections, increased middle ear infections, developmental toxicity resulting in lower birth weights, and impaired lung function. For adults, it reiterated and strengthened its prior findings, including lung cancer and heart disease. The new report also included two significant new findings, including their conclusion that exposure to secondhand smoke causes nasal sinus cancer and that it causes breast cancer in younger, primarily pre-menopausal women. I intend to vote no on all four ordinances today.
Thank you, Councilman. Anyone else? Mr. Decker, call the roll. This bill has been read on two separate days. The question is, shall the bill pass finally? Mr. Decker, now call the roll.
Councilwoman Bass, Councilwoman Blackwell, Councilman Good, Councilman Greenlee, Councilman Heenan, Councilman Johnson, Councilman Jones, Councilman Nielsen, Councilman O'Brien, Councilman O'Neil, Councilman O., Councilwoman Conrona Sanchez, Councilwoman Reynolds Brown, Councilman Squilla, Councilwoman Tasco, Council President Clark.
Aye, the ayes are 15 and ayes are 1. Majority of members present voting in affirmative that the bill passes. Mr. Decker, 140635.
And ordinance amending Section 10602 of the Philadelphia Code known as the Clean Indoor Air Worker Protection Law by providing a limited period of time during which certain drinking establishments may apply for and obtain a waiver of the provisions of the section prohibiting smoking in certain places.
This bill has been heard on two separate days. The question is, shall the bill pass finally? Mr. Decker, call the roll.
Councilwoman Bass, Councilwoman Blackwell, Councilman Good, Councilman Greenlee, Councilman Heenan, Councilman Johnson, Councilman Jones, Councilman Nielsen, Councilman O'Brien, Councilman O'Neil, Councilman O., Councilwoman Conrona Sanchez, Councilwoman Reynolds Brown, Councilman Squilla, Councilwoman Tasco, Council President Clark.
Aye, the ayes are 15 and ayes are 1. Majority of members present voting in affirmative that the bill passes. Mr. Decker, 140649.
And ordinance amending Section 10602 of the Philadelphia Code known as the Clean Indoor Air Worker Protection Law by providing a limited period of time during which certain drinking establishments may apply for and obtain a waiver of the provisions of the section prohibiting smoking in certain places.
This bill has been heard on two separate days. The question is, shall the bill pass finally? Mr. Decker, call the roll.
Councilwoman Bass, Councilwoman Blackwell, Councilman Good, Councilman Greenlee, Councilman Heenan, Councilman Johnson, Councilman Jones, Councilman Nielsen, Councilman O'Brien, Councilman O'Neil, Councilman O., Councilwoman Conrona Sanchez, Councilwoman Reynolds Brown, Councilman Squilla, Councilwoman Tasco, Council President Clark.
Aye, the ayes are 15 and ayes are 1. Majority of members present voting in affirmative that the bill passes. Mr. Decker, 140886.
And ordinance amending Section 10602 of the Philadelphia Code known as the Clean Indoor Air Worker Protection Law by providing a limited period of time during which certain drinking establishments may apply for and obtain a waiver of the provisions of the section prohibiting smoking in certain places.
This bill has been heard on two separate days. The question is, shall the bill pass finally? Mr. Decker, call the roll.
Councilwoman Bass, Councilwoman Blackwell, Councilman Good, Councilman Greenlee, Councilman Heenan, Councilman Johnson, Councilman Jones, Councilman Nielsen, Councilman O'Brien, Councilman O'Neil, Councilman O., Councilwoman Conrona Sanchez, Councilwoman Reynolds Brown, Councilman Squilla, Councilwoman Tasco, Council President Clark.
Aye, the ayes are 15 and ayes are 1. Majority of members present voting in affirmative that the bill passes. Mr. Decker, you have any additional resolution?
A resolution calling on the City Council of Philadelphia to recognize former mills for their $10,000 give-back giveaway as they exemplify and demonstrate the powerful positive impact that businesses can make in our community, introduced by Councilwoman Blackwell.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Blackwell.
I move for the adoption.
Second.
Move in probably second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Ayes have it, and that resolution is adopted.
And a resolution authorizing councils committees on the disabled and special needs and public safety to hold joint public hearings investigating the barriers faced by people with serious mental health issues who are transitioning from incarceration to the Philadelphia community, introduced by Councilman O'Brien.
Chair recognizes Councilman O'Brien.
I move for the adoption of the resolution.
Second.
It's been moved in probably second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Ayes have it, and that resolution is adopted.
And a resolution authorizing City Council's Committee on the Environment to hold public hearings regarding the state of Philadelphia's environment, introduced by Councilwoman Reynolds Brown.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Reynolds Brown.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for the adoption.[1722.76]
Second.
It's been moved and probably second, all those in favor. Those opposed, ayes have it, and that resolution is adopted.
And a resolution honoring and recognizing Joey Lenfest, Greg Montanaro, Congressman Robert Brady, the Greater Philadelphia Traditions Fund, and City Council's Office of Veterans Affairs for their tireless dedication to our veterans, and their unwavering resolve to organize and establish the first citywide Philadelphia Veterans Day Parade in 2015, introduced by Councilman O. on behalf of Councilman Squealer.
Chair recognizes Councilman O. Oh, I'm sorry, that recognizes Councilman Squealer. Yeah. It was on your, it was on your behalf. Both of you walking, sorry.
Okay. Move for the, uh, adoption of resolution.
Second.
All right, it's been moved, moved twice, and probably second, all, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it, and that resolution is adopted.
And a resolution declaring March 2015 as National Social Work Month and reorganizing, uh, re, recognizing the dedication and commitment of social workers in Philadelphia's Department of Human Services and Community Umbrella Agencies, introduced by Councilwoman Bass.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Bass.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
Second.
Been moved and probably second, all those in favor.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it, and that resolution is adopted.
And a resolution recognizing and honoring the Korean-American veterans of the Vietnam War for their service to the United States, introduced by Councilman O.
Chair recognizes Councilman O.
Thank you very much, Council President. I would, uh, just like to thank George Perez from Congressman Brady's office for making the request, and I move for the adoption of the resolution.
Second.
It's been moved and probably second, all those in favor. Those opposed, ayes have it, and that resolution is adopted.
And a resolution recognizing April 30th as Vietnamese Heritage and Freedom Flag Day as a symbol of the con, of contributions of the Vietnamese-American community in the city of Philadelphia, introduced by Councilman O.
Chair again recognizes Councilman O.
Thank you. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
Second.
Second, it's been moved and probably second, all those in favor.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it, and that resolution is adopted.
There are no other resolutions on the final passage calendar, Mr. President.
Thank you very much, Mr. Decker. Are there any speeches on the part of the minority? I don't have a screen, so you're going to have to raise your hand. Uh, Councilman O.
Thank you, Council President. Uh, again, I'd like to echo, uh, Mark Squealer's resolution, um, and thank you for your leadership on this issue, um, in, uh, the forming and funding of the Accessible Veterans Advisory Commission and all the work it does from job fair, uh, healthcare, and, uh, and employment for veterans. Um, the veteran parade, it's a, it's a striking that it was not held in our city before, and now, thanks to Congressman Brady and Jerry Lenfest and all the members of this body, uh, and especially the executive director Scott Brown and his wonderful staff and commissioners, um, the city will for the first time celebrate the Veterans Day Parade, so thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilman, and thank you so much for running, being the point person for the City Council of Philadelphia, doing a great job on that. Um, Councilman Jones?
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, this morning, 8:30 a.m., at Parkside Business and Technology Center, there was